And we have the entire council here tonight along with our village manager Jeff Sanborn, various members of the staff and residents in the Assembly Hall. If you are listening to this meeting on our live stream and if you have a question you would like to ask the council tonight on any subject whatsoever, you may supply that question via email to the village clerk by using the email address publiccomments@vopnc.org. That's publiccomments@vopnc.org. The clerk will receive those questions and will circulate those to members of the village council and appropriate staff after this meeting. If you are here in the village hall for the meeting and you wish to speak under public comments at the end of a regular meeting, there will be a sign up sheet in the back of the room on the table. If you would please sign that, the village clerk will pick that up in a while and when we get to the regular meeting comment section, I'll call your name one by one to deliver your comments. And if you are speaking to the council live tonight and you have a copy of your comments, welcome to supply those to the village clerk as well. Having called the meeting to order, we'll go to reports from the village manager and the village council and I'll call on Mr. Sanborn. Jeff?
Thank you, John. Just one thing I'd like to comment on and that is we have a fantastic new member of our team with us tonight, Dana Van Nostrand, our new finance director is with us tonight and we have her on the agenda a little bit later for you to appoint her as the village's finance officer.
Dana, welcome. I know all the council members look forward to a chance to speak with you as time goes by. I don't think the village manager or others have assigned you anything special to do tonight and if that comes up, we'll call on you accordingly. But thanks for being here and welcome to the village of Pinehurst. We'll go to reports from the village council. I have just a couple of things to mention. Yesterday, I received a letter from Mr. Don Lamb, who's the chief executive of the Arbor Day Foundation, and I will read from his letter very briefly to you. Mr. Lamb addresses this to the village of Pinehurst. On behalf of the Arbor Day Foundation, I'm thrilled to congratulate Pinehurst on earning recognition as a 2022 Tree City USA. Residents of Pinehurst should be proud to live in a community that makes the planting and care of trees a priority. So we're very lucky to have that. It's something we've achieved in the past, I believe. I'll pass this to the village clerk and maybe we can get that up to the website as well, Jeff. The other two points I will make are these. Last week, a week ago Monday on the 6th and then on the 7th of February, some of you participated here in a presentation from the National Park Service with respect to the 2022 Integrity and Conditions Study, which was completed just in the last few months. The study we had seen in draft form about a year ago. The results of this integrity and conditions study were very favorable, very helpful and a great guide to the way we want to manage our landmark into the future. Some of you have had the opportunity to read that report. I encourage all residents to go to the website. It's now on the website, both the integrity report written for last year after a two-year study and also the 1996 application and approval by the Department of the Interior. And Jeff, I'd like to work with you and Kristin and Kelly to maybe circulate that to a variety of our boards so that they can have the advantage of having that report. The report is, I said, an excellent guide into the future for how we can maintain our landmark status and things we should be doing. The other report I'll make is that the village manager and I attended a dinner meeting a week ago today with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. The department was having an annual meeting here and focusing on issues related to their Division Number Eight, which includes Moore County and the members of the DOT that we work with as well. So we had an opportunity to intermingle with some of our state legislative delegation, many members of the DOT, of course, they were all here, and I think they had an excellent time in looking through Region Eight, including our county and the others, and getting a good idea for some of the needs we have here. We have a number of follow-up steps, which the council is aware, to be working on with the DOT and we thank them for their commitment of their time to us. With that, I'll move on into reports from other members of the council. Starting my right tonight, Jeff Morgan.
I have no reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Jane?
Yes, the beautification committee met on February 6th and they've got quite a calendar of plantings and landscape work planned out for the year. And they also are aware of and very supportive of the quarterly meetings with the Pinehurst Business Partners and other representatives of the business community that we're planning. So that's great. I also attended on February 9th, a meeting of the, I guess it's a work session really, of the Moore County Board of Commissioners. And they have set up eight or 10 task forces consisting of two commission members each to cover such things as budget, land use, law enforcement, solid waste, water and sewer and other matters. And this looks to be sort of their planning process for the year. Some of the items are of particular interest, I think, to the village and we might, if we have time, discuss those in the work session. Or at another work session.
Right. Yeah, Jane, I think particularly you had some information regarding the water task force that you listened to last week. Appreciate your following up with the commissioners on that and I think we'll move that into the work session tonight for a little discussion on that. Patrick?
Yes, first of all, happy Valentine's Day to everybody. Those of you who are making the extra effort to be here this evening, I know that's an extra effort. I have a couple of things to report on. Number one, I want to echo what Jane said regarding the beautification committee. I was so impressed with their attention to detail that that committee put out and discussed in their meeting. It went on for at least 90 minutes, maybe longer. Jeff Batten had us a stopwatch on how long it went, but it's wonderful to see our residents roll up their sleeves and truly sort of get into the weeds, no pun intended there, on the beautification committee regarding the way we keep up our village and so forth. So kudos to them. This, in the last two weeks, myself, the mayor, Councilwoman Bosch, we all attended via Zoom, the UNC School of Government, which offered a couple of courses, one on land use planning and one on conflict management. And I found them both helpful and productive and I took away one interesting idea, we might be discuss it under other business, but I encourage my colleagues that I think the school of government does their best to help us in our jobs. I promised to mention that the Keep Moore County Beautiful is having a cleanup on February 18th from 10 to 12 noon on Linden and Foxfire. They'll provide gloves and safety equipment for folks and I know many of us do that on our own, but it'd be wonderful to work with the Keep Moore County Beautiful group. I also attended this past week via Zoom also, the TarPO meeting. And later on our agenda tonight, there's going to be a discussion on metropolitan planning organizations and that was a big topic of the TarPO discussion. So those of you that are interested in that, I think you'll find the council's discussion very helpful. And finally, I did attend the Partners in Progress meeting early this week and they gave, they went over some of their new plans. One of the plans you've read out in the newspaper is they have an effort underway to have the county and Aberdeen help with the purchase of some land for potential development. And I think we'll be hearing more about that from Partners in Progress. And also, at this meeting, they introduced our former colleague Darren Birch to the Partners in Progress meeting. And I must say, it was the first time in the 18 months I've worked with Darren that I ever saw him with a suit jacket on. So they have really upgraded what Darren's expected to wear, though he was sticking with the Darren shirts. So anyway, that's all I have. I look forward to the council meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Lydia, please.
Thank you. And John, thank you for mentioning the integrity and conditions study that the National Park Service did. This is the final report. It is dense. Read it carefully. Read it. It's got some great information in it. But one thing I'd like to point out, and the Park Service can't remind me enough about this, is that Pinehurst, our landmark district, is on the National Register of Historic Places. There are more than 90,000 listings on the National Register of Historic Places, but only 2,600 of them are landmarks, which is us. We are 3%, smaller than 3% of the National Register is what our landmark district is. So that is a compliment to how we have managed our historic properties. It's a real honor. It's an honor to have it and it's a joy that the Park Service has concluded that we have maintained our integrity. So kudos to staff, kudos to everybody who have been wonderful watchdogs for our historic assets.
Thank you, Lydia. Moving on to agenda item number three then, it's a motion to approve the consent agenda. Before we hear a motion, is there any part of the consent agenda that a council member would like to pull out for later discussion or not? Anything tonight? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Motion approved.
Motion by council member Morgan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Pizzella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number four, we're going to get into some very significant appointments tonight at this meeting and we'll start that right now. Jeff Sanborn.
All right. Thanks, John. We have three vacancies currently on the Historic Preservation Commission and as is normally the case, we went through an interview process. The interview panel consisted of John Taylor, myself, Alex Cameron and Darren Birch. And we have come up, I think, with two very high quality candidates to fill three, two of those three positions. And we have the opportunity for you to make those appointments tonight. I see Roxanne is here. I don't think Carl Ecker is here. We did expect him to be here. Maybe we had our wires crossed. In any event, you, of course, you can appoint him if you choose to do it, even if he's not here. So I guess I'll ask John and Roxanne to come on forward and you can have a conversation with him.
If you both will push those buttons to make it a solid green, John, you'll know how to do that as chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. Thanks very much. John, first of all, thank you for being chair of the committee and being a member of the committee for some, commission for some years now. And Roxanne, we look forward to your participation as a new member. This is your chance, Roxanne, to ask a few questions of the council if you would like, but we've had a chance to review your background and maybe you could just speak to us for a few minutes about that background and what interested you in the historic commission and we'll take a few questions from the council at that point in time.
And if I could, maybe just to lead off, as Darren mentioned, we've lost three members, two of whom had legal experience. And so I felt, in looking for new members, that it would be important to have at least one person with legal experience. It turns out that of the four people we've interviewed so far, two of them had it and those are the two candidates that we're moving forward with. We have two other very good candidates plus a third that we have not interviewed and we would expect to be bringing forth a seventh nominee, hopefully in time for the March meeting. But as we sit here tonight, we are down to four, which is the minimum we have to do business. So we are very appreciative of your taking time to hopefully approve two people, get us back up to fighting weight at six. I'd make mention of just two other things. Number one, with respect to the National Arbor Day, there are certain circumstances under which HPC has to approve either the planting of new trees, if there's new construction, or the removal of trees. And so we take that responsibility seriously in terms of what we talk about in terms of maintenance of the overall tree canopy on any particular property. The other thing I would say with respect to the Park Service, I was interested in their final report at how often things that HPC does was woven through the report. I also noticed a couple of suggestions that they had, which are things that we would like to take up as a commission, although I would say that I suspect we would also need staff resource to help us if we wanted to move forward. That's not an excess supply at the moment, but we will keep that in the back of our mind as we go forward. And with that, thank you very much and pleased to have you chat with Roxanne.
Hello. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, village council and village staff. I'm happy to be here today, to have the opportunity to be considered for a position on the Historic Preservation Commission. And rather than reiterate my legal background and how that could help the HPC, I thought I'd rather share with you what I'm really most passionate about and that is historic preservation. Because historic preservation and restoration is really, really important. It's what attracts tourists to the village and it's also what attracts residents to make an investment and become part of a community in Pinehurst. It's what attracted my husband and I to Pinehurst 30 years ago when we had planned a golf trip from Chicago. And while my husband was on the golf course hitting golf balls or golfing for a few days, I got lost wandering around the village on the curvilinear streets designed by Olmsted and was smitten with the cottages and the gardens and just the whole historic ambiance and aesthetic of the village. And together, both of us said someday, we want to live in Pinehurst. So that was 30 years ago and during that 30-year period, I have personally been involved in many remodels and renovations of homes that we've lived in, working with contractors and working without. So that made me have to learn. It required me to learn county building codes, municipal codes, and that lovely thing called a village historic district overlay, which is not always easy to understand because my home in suburban Chicago was in a overlay historic district, built in 1928, not as old as here. But anyways, I remodeled homes in suburban Chicago and most recently in Carmel, California, where we lived for a period of about five years. And those codes out there are incredibly strict. And so I've been involved with this my whole career, really. And I learned more than I needed to about window design, shutters, roofing, architecture of landscape, fences, setbacks, all those things. And after all that education and effort, like most couples, my husband and I said, never again are we doing a house remodel. So seven years ago, that someday retirement came and we purchased the cottage called The Sycamore, which is a Tufts cottage built in 1896. And it was already remodeled, thank goodness, and it just needed some interior updates and some decorating, which we were more than happy to do. So I personally really enjoy being a steward of a historic property in the historic district and also in the national landmark district, which I just paid attention to the report. I haven't read the missive on Lydia's desk there, but I didn't realize that we were, I didn't realize the magnitude of the landmark. And I think a lot of people come here and they don't even know we're a landmark. They know we're a historic district, but not so much a landmark. Anyways, I enjoy the charge of the historic district every day because it's my hood or my neighborhood. And I think perhaps all that street knowledge that I've accumulated will really help, in addition to my legal background, work on the HPC, especially as it relates to the design standards and the COA process. And so I have an ability to look at that process, I think, from not just a commissioner, but also as an applicant would. And I think that's really important. So I look forward to working with the HPC and adding value where I can. So thank you for your time this evening.
Roxanne, thank you. Those are very helpful comments and I can see that you would be a very active and engaged member of the Historic Preservation Commission. Are there questions or comments from council members with respect to this candidacy? Jane, please.
I really appreciate you offering to be on the commission because it's harder than you might think. I'm sure you're
No, that's not what John Taylor told
That's not what I told her.
I'm sure you're aware of that, you know,
Yes.
Conceptually, but once you get, it is a lot of work and, but we need somebody who's got the breadth of knowledge and the passion and the commitment. And so thank you very much indeed.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Roxanne, any questions of us that you might have tonight?
No, I'll let that pass for now.
All right. All right, fine.
John, I just wanted to, as Jane said, we have so much talent in this community and when you find somebody with your talent who seems to be a perfect fit for one of our boards and commissions, I'm so happy that you were willing to offer your time. And I have a feeling you're going to work hard and add a lot. So thanks again for being willing to do this and for diving in and doing a great job, I'm sure.
Thank you.
All right. Having heard some comments from our candidate and from the head of the HPC and our village manager, is there a motion to approve this nomination?
Yes, I move to approve Resolution 23-03, appointing Roxanne Veitkus to the Pinehurst Historic Preservation Commission for a term starting February 15th, 2023 and expiring January 31st, 2025.
That's a motion by council member Pizzella. Is there a second?
Second.
That's a second by council member Morgan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Roxanne, congratulations. John, congratulations to you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, yeah, sure. Why not? There is a second nomination tonight, Carl Ecker, who cannot be here this evening. On the one hand, we've heard John Taylor's statement that the historic commission is a little lean right now as to members and we can deal with Mr. Ecker's nomination tonight if that's all right with council. If we do want to deal with that, I would certainly want to invite him to our next meeting or whenever he could so we could speak to him and understand him as well.
And I would mention only by way of Roxanne's primary legal experience was not necessarily always in the area of real estate. Carl's really was. He's done a number of things. He's worked in Washington DC before. I think it was a pretty unanimous feeling between Jeff, Darren, Alex and myself that Roxanne and Carl were the two strongest of the four candidates that we had interviewed at that point. The other two, one of whom may come before you again in the future, bring other things to the table, but Carl brought significant experience in real estate law and understanding all of the things, intersection of HPC and COA requirements with zoning and other things. So I think he was a very strong candidate and we wish he could be here tonight, but I would very much appreciate if he could be appointed because we're still pretty lean even now that we're at five.
John, thanks for those comments. Thanks to village manager. We did have a little biography about Roxanne on the one hand and Carl on the other a couple of weeks ago. We've had a chance to review that and also review it again in the last couple of days. I'm personally comfortable to move ahead with this recommendation and approval. Are there any objections from the council?
No objection. I just like to be sure that Carl joins us at our next meeting.
Yeah, at a next meeting when he'd be available. I think that can be arranged.
I will reach out to him, assuming approval, and make sure that he puts that on his calendar as well.
Thank you, John. Any questions from council? Is there a motion then for this nomination?
I move to approve Resolution 23-04, appointing Carl Ecker to the Pinehurst Historic Preservation Commission for a term starting February 15th, 2023 and expiring January 31st, 2025.
That's a motion by council member Morgan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Bosch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. John, thank you very much for your attention and your commitment as chairman of that committee.
My pleasure and thank you all.
We'll move on to item number six. Jeff?
All right. General statutes require that the council appoint a finance officer for the village and I'm pretty sure that while Sheila Edmund stepped up in the interim, she'd probably prefer that it not be her going forward. And I certainly don't want it to be me and I don't think Doug wants it to be him either. So the logical candidate is Dana, now that she's taken on the role as our finance director. So we've prepared a resolution for you to appoint her as the village's finance officer.
Dana, greetings officially. I had a chance to speak with you briefly yesterday. As I said earlier tonight, I know the other council members look forward to working with you as well. Again, we've had your background presented to us over recent weeks, but I'm sure there's some things you might like to tell us tonight. Please go ahead if you do.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm glad to be here this evening to meet you all. My background began as a CPA, working with KPMG as an auditor, focusing primarily on higher education, state government and other not-for-profit clients. I have then, in the last eight and a half years, worked for the College of New Jersey, which is a state-funded public college in New Jersey. My responsibilities there focused primarily on budget, strategic planning in terms of supporting that through the budgeting process, financial reporting, running the audits. And my experience there, I think, will serve me well here, even though this is my first time working in local government. I'm very excited to be here and work in a thriving community with a great team of people, particularly the finance staff, that I can already tell are extremely dedicated, very knowledgeable and very well-respected among the staff here. I'm proud to be joining their team. I'm very glad to be working in public service. That is something that I really enjoyed in my previous experience, working at a public college, really being a part of the community and having the ability to bring change to the community in a positive way. I have worked in very challenging budget environments, particularly in higher education in New Jersey and higher education overall. And so I think that will serve me well as well going forward here with the village as, you know, times have been very good here and you're in a very good financial position and I hope to continue that going forward.
Dana, thanks very much. I believe you also actually moved to North Carolina in the Pinehurst area in 2020, if I recall. So you've been in the community for a while, continuing your work for the New Jersey school from home.
Yes.
But we're happy to make this a permanent position for you now. Now you have an office to go to.
Yes.
You can get back in the swing of that in village hall here. Are there questions or comments for Dana from members of the council?
Yeah, I just have one question. In your previous positions in public service, what was the fiscal year period you worked on?
The same as here, a June 30th year end, yes.
Thanks.
Other questions for Dana? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I moved to approve, excuse me, I moved to approve Resolution 23-05, appointing Dana Van Nostrand, finance officer for the village of Pinehurst.
That's a motion by council member Bosch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Pizzella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? The motion carries unanimously. Dana, welcome officially and now you have an actual title position right there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jeff, we'll move on to item number seven, please.
All right. Thank you, John. As you all know, you have a very extensive policy adopted by the council. We have a policy adopted by the council that governs fees and charges that are administered across the staff. And once every year, we solicit input from all of our departments on what they would like to see changed and we consolidate that input and ultimately bring forward a document that we think makes the most sense with regard to the most sense with regard to proposed changes. And Doug's going to cover that product for you for this year.
So Doug, you drove the straw this year on how to present this fees and charges schedule.
I did. I considered making Dana do it, but it's only been about a week. I figure maybe that would be a little cruel. So we have a few items for you. I'm going to pull up the summary so we can all look at it together. It may take a second. Thank you, Kelly. So we have here a few changes. We're going to start off with the fire department. So as you can see, we have a few fees that we are increasing to cover the cost of the re-inspections. So for the first and second and third and subsequent re-inspections, we're increasing it 100%. So from 50 to 100, 100 to 200, and from 250 to 500. So that's going to cover the cost of us having to go back there and re-inspect time and time because right now we aren't really covering those costs.
Doug, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Are these sort of in line with what our neighboring communities are doing? Or can you address that when we go through this?
Yeah, if there are specific questions, we have the fire chief here, but they are in line with what other communities are doing.
Thank you.
We also have a, the next few items for the fire sprinklers and the detection systems, we were adding a $50 minimum because sometimes based on the square footage, it would be like a $3.50 fee or whatever. So that's not going to cover our costs, but if we have the $50 minimum, it will cover the cost for us. And we have the re-review fees down there, and that has a 50% increase up to $150. And again, to cover the cost of re-reviews. And then we have the express plan reviews. So if we need to do it in less than 48 hours, these are new fees for $250. In total, these aren't going to bring in a lot of money for the village, but it's about $2,000 to $3,000.
Could we, maybe we could deal with each of the categories separately? Just kind of create discussion around the points. You're in the fire department now, right?
Yep, we can go department by department, that's fine.
Yeah. Any questions on the fire department? I was impressed by the fact that so much inspection goes on. I see Carlton is back there tonight, but all of this is related to both, well, mostly commercial development, right? And all the work that has to be done to get those systems approved through us.
Right, yeah. And we prefer not to have re-inspections, but there's times where things weren't done and they need to be corrected, and so we had to go back out and re-inspect those later.
Yeah, I think a fair amount of what we're trying to do here is to increase the incentive to get it right the first time.
Yeah, yeah. Jane?
Yeah, these are, this is maybe a little bit more general than just the fire department, but these are modest changes. And given all the inflation and so forth that we've had, do they fairly, really cover the cost to provide these services? Because otherwise, it's the taxpayers.
Right. And in general, for all of these that we're going to cover, that was part of the intent, is that we want to cover our costs that have increased over years, especially the last couple of years. So you're right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Doug, do you happen to know how much we collected in fees as a village last year?
In total, on all our fees?
Yeah.
That number I would have to look up.
I'd like
It's in our budget information that we got.
From our meeting? Okay, I'm fine then.
Okay.
It's there, I can find it.
Any other questions about the fire department? Move ahead, Doug.
Thank you.
All right, so the next one is we created the new non-conforming use certificate for short-term rentals. So that is the $50 fee that was created as part of that. Any questions? All right, next we have door-to-door pedaling. So if you recall, we eliminated this except for certain groups like not-for-profits and religious groups. So we are eliminating the fee, and those who will be eligible to go door-to-door peddling, there will no longer be the fee for them. And they didn't have one previously because they're not-for-profit. And then solid waste, we are moving the fee from $48 to $70 for all the refuse totes. $70 is our cost. And Mike just showed me that if you go to Lowe's, it's $136. So, and we deliver, so that's a bonus. Any questions on solid waste?
Go ahead.
All right. In recreation, we have increased the Fair Barn cost 20% overall. And this was done because we were looking at all the other facilities that did weddings and things similar to us, and we wanted to stay in line with them, make sure we're kind of hitting the right note. And so this was the result, is that an overall 20% increase across the board for our Fair Barn fees.
Fair Barn remains a very popular spot, heavily used and throughout the weekends, but during the weeks as well. Any questions on any of the rest of those fees then, from anybody on the council? Jane, Doug, Jeff?
There's no questions. We do have Resolution 2301 to adopt this.
I have a general question. Wait, do you have a question about this fee schedule?
I do, not about the Fair Barn. My question
Let me go ahead and ask mine. And Jeff Sanborn, I think you might have started this. Our fee schedule is 28 pages long. Do we systematically go through and every year do a certain portion? I mean, what's our systematic way of reviewing the fee schedule over a period of time?
Yeah, it's not, I think what you're referring to, maybe by comparison, is our pay and classification study, where we do it once every
Actually, it changes to fees and charges. So this is just a portion of our, all of the fees and charges that we impose. But I recall over the past few years, we have taken certain segments of it. We don't
Well, we solicit input from across the staff on all of the fees and charges. And what you're seeing are the things that there were recommended changes for.
Okay, so that's our process.
Not broken down, like, we're going to do 30% this year and 30% this year.
Okay, that answers my question. Thanks.
Any other questions? Pat?
Yeah, my question has to do with the library. And back in September at our regular meeting, we discussed this, that the library fee, card fee, we don't charge non-residents for a library card fee. And whereas if you go through these, I stopped counting at about 20, but we constantly are charging on our residents a heightened fee as opposed to our residents for something. And at the time, we talked about addressing it down the road. And we also, at the time, Brooke told us that there was a current software system presented a problem of not allowing us to do it at the moment. So I understand all those things. But given that we now, as a village, have the stewardship of the library, and we acquired that through an agreement with the previous private management of it, and comparing other libraries like Southern Pines, which does charge just a nominal fee for non-residents, I'd like to revisit that. I think we should have some sort of nominal fee for non-residents.
Yeah. And maybe Jeff, you can jump in if I say something wrong, but I know that the intent was when we upgraded the software system to look at adding the fee at that time.
Okay.
Anything you want to add?
No, Doug's substantially correct. It is going to require additional software capabilities. But we are looking at software capabilities as a whole at the library right now. We've just initiated our review with IT. I think we are going to, at least as it stands today, implement new software at the point of when we are ready to reopen after the expansion or construction or whatever we end up doing with the library and archives.
But we won't have any new software for the library until we have a new library, in essence.
Yes, that right now is our intent. We looked at it very recently, probably within the last 30 days that we met on that, and we've discussed it. And we feel like the implementation of that and the kickoff of opening the new library is probably going to be in our best interest overall. Because at that point, we would wipe the slate clean of all memberships. Residents would have to apply for a membership to get a new membership.
Right.
Non-residents would apply for a membership. And obviously, as you've already pointed out, a differential in fee structure would be appropriate. Whether it's free for residents and then, you know, some dollar figure for non-residents, or whether there's a small charge for residents and then something significantly, you know, double that or whatever the case may be for non-residents.
I think in Southern Pines, I think the residents aren't charged there, given that their taxes are being used to run it.
Yeah.
It's just non-residents. And, okay, I'm perfectly fine.
We intend to go that direction. We're in agreement with that. That's the direction we think we need to go. It's just a matter of, the software that we need to look at is broader than just the membership component. It's more of a, how do you, you know, cataloging and everything else associated with the
I'm fine. I think it's important to put the library on a good fiscal path. And I think a small nominal fee will demonstrate to our residents that it's a small thing we're doing, but that we will do that. Okay, I'm fine. We'll watch it as we move forward. Thank you.
Are there other questions for Doug regarding any parts of the proposed fee schedule change? Jane, anybody else? I noticed a number of our department heads are here, not only for this agenda item, but for the next one. So it's good to see you all here tonight. And thank you for your input to Doug on making these fee changes. I think we have a motion for this particular item, number seven.
I'll move to approve Resolution 23-01, amending Village of Pinehurst fees and charges schedule effective July 1, 2023, as presented and identified as Exhibit A.
That's a motion by Councilmember Hogaman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pazella. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Doug, good work. Department heads, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jeff, should we move on into number eight then, please?
All right. Thank you, John, and I think Angie's coming up. And I've shared some information with you about this in the last week or so. Not unlike, I think, everywhere, it seems. We have a lot of, we're having a lot of difficulty in recruitment of our public safety folks, new hires, younger folks, if you will. And one of the things that we would like to do moving forward to try to bridge that gap is to take on the ability to hire fire and police cadets and then sponsor them through their academy experience, so that they're not having to foot that bill themselves while they're trying to hold on at some other job or otherwise provide for themselves. And we think that we might be able to get a little bit of an edge here moving forward. This is not unlike what some of our neighboring communities are doing. I'm pretty sure Southern Pines is already doing this, at least on the police side. And I think I have heard that Aberdeen as well. Angie may be able to elaborate on that. So I think I'll turn it over to Angie.
Well, Jeff gave a very good summary, and we are requesting to add those two trainee cadet positions to the pay scale. We're not asking for addition to headcount, it's just the positions, so that we can hire folks who don't quite have those certifications yet. But when they finish their course, they will be certified, and we would be able to promote them into the full-time positions for either fire or police.
Can you remind me about the pay grade we have here? I see it goes up to 18. What is the grade numbers?
Yeah, they go anywhere from, I think, 11 to 35 or 36.
Okay, so that's, I'm just looking at the spectrum.
Right.
Okay, it's a different scale here.
Right. And these two recommendations are actually one grade below a certified firefighter and a certified police officer. And that would be what we would pay them before they finish their course. And then once they finish, like I said, we would promote them into the full-time roles.
I think that's a very creative solution. Jeff Sanborn and I were talking a few weeks ago, I think the council did generally, about the whole aspects of employing folks and getting people involved, especially in our fire and police departments. And I noticed in the materials we've received recently from the North Carolina League of Municipalities, as well as some comments from some of our state senators and representatives, that there is a growing concern across the state of attracting people at a young age, early on as possible, into the police and fire departments. And so what we're doing here is something that hopefully the state will embrace and maybe find some additional assistance in that in the future. But it's certainly well-advised, I think, on our own to proceed with this.
Well, and I think both chiefs, for coming to me, we met and we discussed this and a few other things. It's just been a challenge that we have just, I've been recruiting for a number of years. I've never experienced this in my entire career. So it's challenging.
I hope you'll let us know as this goes forward, how this helps if we're hiring people in this area at this
Absolutely.
Other questions for Angie?
Do we pay for these trainees, for their continued training and schooling and so forth for their careers?
Right, for folks that are employees of ours, if they receive training relative to their career field, we absolutely will pay for that training. A lot of the training that fire and police receive is free, except for maybe the travel expense and those kind of things. So we're fortunate in that respect. But yes, we would pay for any training that they, ongoing training that they need.
Thank you. Makes sense.
Other questions, comments? Lydia?
Is there, what if we pay for their training? Will we compensate them while they're being trained? Or just, it's a compensation component and the training component. Those are the two costs. What if at the end of this, they decide they don't want to be in law enforcement or a firefighter after all? It's just a risk. I can see where it'd be a risk that we would take, but it's worth the risk because we really need.
Yeah, it could be a risk. We would, they would go through the regular recruiting process, and we would hire them, and we would require them to agree to work with us for a certain amount of time. So
The question is, is that binding?
But How enforceable is it? Right, right. But we think the risk is worth it.
Well, to me, it seems like it's a very creative way to address a very real problem. So I think, I like it.
And the goal would also be, when they're not in class, they could come by and actually do work for us at either the police station or the fire station. So
It seems like a very, very creative idea, a very good idea. And I'm pleased that you've been able to put this together.
Other questions for Angie? Before we have a motion, I'd just like to thank Chief Cole and Chief Webb, who are here, for your input to this, and we hope this will be satisfactory and help you move ahead with your personnel needs. This is item number eight. Is there a motion, please?
I move to approve Resolution 23-02, amending the Village of Pinehurst's policy on administration of the position classification and pay plan effective February 14, 2023, as presented and identified as Attachment A and Attachment B.
That's a motion by Councilmember Bosch. Is there a second?
Second.
Right here.
Second.
Patrick, was it you? Councilmember Pazella with the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Angie, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We'll move now to any other business that council or staff want to bring before this regular meeting, before we go into our work session. Any other subjects? Hearing none?
Oh, I got a couple.
Oh, Patrick, you do? Sorry. Please, go ahead.
It's okay. Very minor, and if any of my colleagues think that these topics should be moved to the work session or put on a feature agenda, just speak up. I don't want to lose track of them. One is, I was curious about the follow-up from the Patty Murray of Scotland, the mayor of Dor niche, and the relationship.
I'll talk about that in the work session.
There we go. So I thought we might hear that. Secondly, I mentioned the School of Government, one item that I thought was a sort of unique one. But it was something I once heard us in general discuss. And it was something called a community conversations that evidently some councils do around the state, where they do not have a formal council meeting, but they have a gathering of the council. And rather than having three minutes at a mic, citizens can come up and maybe talk long
longer, and we can interact with them on occasion. And I, I toss that out there as, as something that we might want to consider. I think it needs a discussion among ourselves as to how that would work and how often we might do it, but I, again, I thought it was a, an unique way for a part-time governing body to occasionally interject a little more dialogue with the community, rather than just our sort of regular order of every two weeks, with three minutes for those who want to say something. So we can talk about it later, or talk about it now. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts?
There'll be a, there'll be a work session type discussion.
I'm fine with that.
Whether it's tonight or another one, but go ahead.
Okay. We, I continue to get, and I'm sure others do, various suggestions regarding parking and traffic. I want to, of the many I got, I had two I received that I thought were rather original, at least from my standpoint. One had to do with when we start restriping, and we are going to have some golf cart parking, as we do now, that the stripes for golf cart parking be a different color. So some people won't try to take two of those spots at one time to park their car, rather than that they see it's actually for a golf cart. Again, it was a resident who mentioned that to me, and I thought, well, that seems like a pretty simple idea. And there were two others that dovetail with the letter that you, Mr. Mayor, and the village manager sent to NC DOT, as far as the sort of suggestions to them to continue our ongoing discussion of how we can make some type of improvements to the traffic flow there. One was, again, I heard this from a resident in number six, that the word "only" be placed on the traffic signs for the lane where you only can go to Aberdeen. Rather than the way it says now, it'll say Pinehurst, Southern Pines, here, and then over here, it might say Aberdeen. Whereas if the word "only" was up there, it may alert a driver earlier on that if they're going, this is the lane only if you're going to turn off and go to Pinehurst, or turn off and go to Aberdeen. Small suggestion, but sort of a rather simple thing that might reduce the confusion in the lane, switching for newcomers that are driving through there, and.
Could it be that if you're not local and your destination isn't local, that would cause other confusion? In other words, if you, you enter the traffic circle and you want to go to 211, and the destination, the arrow says you could, it says only to Pinehurst.
Well, but if the lane will only take you to Pinehurst, if you come up on 211, there, on the, on 211, you go into the traffic circle, there is a point where that sort of loop lane that takes you into Pinehurst, and you can only turn into that lane and go to Pinehurst, rather than go up to it at the very end and then dart out to get to the circle and then go to Aberdeen.
Right, but see, that, that slip lane doesn't take you to only Pinehurst. It takes you to all points west that 211 connects with.
Maybe I'm not explaining it right. No, I, I, the way I, I drove it the other day, just to see what the suggestion would mean.
I don't understand what you're asking there.
Okay, well.
Why don't we?
We can talk about it later.
Well, you referenced earlier the letter we've written to DOT with a list of ideas and suggestions we want to review, and there are several that relate to the right-hand lane there, which is what you're addressing.
Yeah.
Not this particular item, but the village clerk is listening.
You're talking about the slip.
And I think if we add this to the list of those solutions, then we'll see how that might sort of.
Because on the roadway, on the roadway sometimes, the, the lettering there will say "only" or this with an arrow to Aberdeen, but it's on above, so if you're not watching the, reading the road, above it doesn't indicate that. Anyway, I encourage us to.
It's an exit only, not a, not a Pinehurst only.
Correct.
I got it.
Correct, only to, to, exit to Pinehurst. The other suggestion was, on the slip lane issue, was those, I'll call them movable, sort of rubber pole barriers. You've seen them.
I think that's on the list already.
Was it actually on our list? Did we call it that?
It's on my mind for sure. I thought we added it to the list, but I'm not sure.
I went, I went back to the list when the person suggested it to me.
Something that would prevent the traffic in the slip lane.
Barricades, it was on.
From moving from the right to the left.
Is the word barricade?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe that's why I didn't catch it.
I don't recall the words that were used, but the visual that you're painting is in line with what I interpreted.
Okay, then I'm fine. I just thought, again, that would be a deterrent from people doing that.
Well, and, and whatever happens with the slip lane, and however it might be described, the key is that accidents happen most of the time because people are moving from the right to the left, trying to get out of the slip lane, and for whatever reasons, get to the left, and that causes an accident.
That's right.
That plus bumping the car in front of you. So that, accidents create congestion and other problems, and alleviating that sort of thing, or trying to reduce the probability it's going to happen, may help. Don't know, but it's on that list.
I think most accidents are actually.
Bumping ahead?
It's, it's, yeah, it's, it's a rear-end collision.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Somebody that thought the person in front of them was going to continue out into the circle, but that person stopped.
Surprise, surprise, yeah.
Okay, well, I thank my colleagues for indulging me there, and we can check on this down the road.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, because on that subject, which is the whole DOT issue, I mentioned the meeting that Jeff and I attended last week. DOT eight, Division eight folks, Patrick Norman, wanted to wait till after that was concluded to begin to address these issues with the village, and so we'll set a time to begin that discussion.
Great.
Kelly, thank you for making notes of that, too. Any other business to come to the village council before the work session? All right, there are comments from attendees tonight, Kelly? Thank you. I have one person signed up, Judy Kemp, and if anyone else is here who wishes to speak, we can call on you after this. Judy, thank you very much. You can sit, I'm sorry, if you have something to distribute? Would you like to distribute that right now, then? That'd be fine. And Judy, you can speak right from there, or the table there, whatever you prefer. And would you just identify your full name and address, please?
I'm Judy Kemp. I live at 1290 Burning Tree Road.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm really impressed with all of you, with the fact that you're really taking the seriousness of historical district and the history of Pinehurst. The history of Pinehurst comes from wellness and health. When Tough started the city, they, he really had an eye for that. He wanted that for our city. And so I bring to your attention this latest report, evidence of radioactive, or excuse me, radio frequency radiation that can cause COVID-like symptoms, when actually, it may even be caused COVID altogether. So with the deployment of 5G throughout the world, some of these major cities that deployed 5G at the same time, like Wuhan, also had massive COVID response. I mean, they had people dying of COVID. Well, if you look at the cellular issues that happen at the cellular inside your body, when you have, when you're exposed to radio frequency radiation, your body can go through hypercoagulation, can have problems with your heart, you can also have your cells open up and release toxins, which gives you kind of like a flu, you know? And depending on how toxic you are, whether you're a drinker, whether you, you know, do other things, or whatever, the response can be great, and your exposure to 5G or other radio, radio frequency radiation. So what I'm trying to do is, we dodged a bullet here in Pinehurst, because we didn't have deploy, deployment of 5G at the time. So we did have some deaths, and God bless them, and may they rest in peace, but because we didn't have it on full deployment here, we really did, probably just really saved a lot of lives. So I'm wondering if you could either, I don't know what the deployment hears in Pine, in Pinehurst, but if there's a deployment of 5G towers, mini-towers, streetlights that are, that are stealth, they have 5G transponders in them? If we can halt them, especially in the residential areas, in front of schools, near schools, because most of our time is spent at home, overnight, sleeping, resting, and our children need to be protected. So I'm wondering if we can put a moratorium on that, if it's, it's being deployed, or if it hasn't been deployed, maybe do a study, because it should be safe before we deploy anything. And I think our residents deserve it, and I think you're the council to do it. So I'm wondering, all across the country, from Brussels, all the way to areas of San Francisco, are halting 5G for a good reason, and this is the reason. This is on link. So.
Thank you for this report. It looks very extensive.
Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of references, and if you need to know the physiology of it, that's kind of my background.
All right, thank you very much for that. We'll work with staff on evaluating this, then. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the village council this evening on any subject whatsoever? Seeing none, is there a move, move to adjourn the regular meeting and move to the work session?
I move to adjourn the regular meeting and move to the work session.
That's a motion by Pat Bezella. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jane Hogeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We'll move to a work session at 6:40, take a quick break, reset, and re, and restart the meeting at 6:40. Thank you.